Oh, we're holding on to that. They said last year, oh, this is great. This is awesome. This is the best we've ever had.
You have to be chief.
Well, what we have in right here.
I'm not the chief. I don't make the final decision. Only in the absence of the chief.
I'm sure you can get one of these and one of those.
Call regular council meeting here to order at City Hall September 4, 2018, 7:00 PM. Any additions to the agenda? Moving on, citizens comments. Any citizens comments this evening? Moving on, consent agenda approved minutes, regular council meeting August 21st, 2018, and special council meeting August 28th, 2018. Also appropriation ordinance 09-04-18 in the amount of $88,489.14 in petty cash and the amount of $237.49. Do you hear motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Ryan Sanders, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Carries four O. Department head committee reports, grant administrator Lisa Cornwell, not present. Did you have anything to add to that? Counsel, did you want to discuss anything in going further with that at this time? Or do you want to talk about it next meeting?
I think she had to know by the side of the meeting.
Yeah. Counsel's thoughts on the sidewalks project? Move forward with applying for it or?
If she applies for the grant, then we don't have to accept it, right?
I talked to her today. She said that basically she was going to come in today to see about putting it off until next year to her application that she put in. They won't deduct her any points from getting it. So if we could somehow find a way to finance it between now and this time next year, that we will be right at the step we're at right now. And that's what she was bringing up. So I told her that the way we are with money right now, that I didn't think we were doing anything with it. And she kind of agreed with that, that we needed to focus other money on Fifth Street, kind of. So that's kind of what I got from all that.
That's pretty much what I got from her too when I spoke to her over at school.
Same here.
Yeah.
Counsel, okay with continuing to look into ways to potentially finance this project and look at it again next year?
I don't see a problem with that. Regardless if it's a grant or whatever, they're probably going to have some attention. None of the sidewalks.
Right.
Is that the best way? Probably not.
More of a plan.
But if we, if we, if we ran a plan for next year, yeah, this year, there's no sign of work.
We might have to shoot for 2020 since we already did the budget for 2019, but...
Still look at it.
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, police department report. Police chief Gudey was in. Bill worked with him on getting some organization. His paperwork was done. He was sworn in. He is acting as his position and Bill and he are working together to get this.
I've been in contact with him every day, so working on things, trying to get stuff going. They'll try to get our police department bill back up.
When's his first, his start date? I mean, I know he's...
Around the 15th.
We discussed the 15th. I know I went ahead and we put him on and so that he could be communicating with Bill and run the department from there. I know he's been working on some things that he wants to kind of start implementing once he does get here in his working schedule.
We talked to the county about what they're doing with body cameras. We did order some small cameras to try out. The county is using within our spending limit. And then we did order some flashlights for the cars so we didn't have to use these little micro many things.
Yeah. So just getting, getting some things back in order and taking care of business. So certainly things are pretty smooth at this point.
All right, so good. I do what, I would like, I did talk to him today. The truck needs tires. So I don't know what you, how you want me to go about that with getting tires for the truck. But that's, that's getting pretty, pretty thin.
I would say that.
It's below the tread, wear, wear bars on the tread, so.
I would say to communicate with him on what he, where he would like you. I mean, obviously a couple of quotes from here locally would be best, but just communicate with him and getting some quotes and, and have those ready to present next meeting, counsel.
Yeah. Try to get Scott Clausen, just tires and Marshall and Fisher, I think.
Just get tires.
Right, get some local quotes.
Get some quotes from around here for the next meeting, I think, and we can do that.
Okay. That'll work. Thank you.
Very good. Anything else for police department?
Just curious, so have we had any other applications?
Yeah.
We've had a few. We had quite a spurt of them last week come in. Jim's got them all with him right now. He's doing better. Reference checks on people, trying to weed out what he thinks is good and not. So he's going to send me some stuff so I can do some other stuff for him here and go from there. Like we got about four or five of them we're checking into. We got an interview with a kid from Colorado Saturday and go from there.
Excellent. Good.
We're gaining.
All right. Okay, moving on, fire chief Sanders. Nope. Okay, moving on, city clerk Jamie Getty.
I got nothing.
Okay.
We're quick to move on.
City superintendent Jeff Williamson.
Must be a first.
We're thinking it.
We went up and rotted for Hudson here a couple of weeks ago, which we have done on occasion in the past. And Brett wanted to know if the city would be willing to do some type of a contract to go around and run all their main lines. I told him I would prefer to do them as he had problems, but he thinks he has some problems in the west end of town that have not ever been addressed as far as he knows. And just a good major cleaning. And I told him if we did it, that the way the workload is right now, they probably would have to wait till later on in the fall. Normally, we're up there a couple hours, you know, usually when we run a line. But I don't know exactly what we've been charging them, but it's in the neighborhood of somewhere between $200 and $300. We have an hourly rate on the truck plus the two guys that go with it. So I told him I would talk to you guys and see how you felt about that. I think he wanted a flat rate to come up and clean everything. I don't know how many feet. You know, I can't tell you that. If I knew the footage, might be a little more fair to try and do something with them. But, you know, whether the council's even open to the idea of doing it, so.
Thoughts?
I think it'd be good, I think it'd be good to help them out and make money in the process of it. If, what I'd say is see how much you're estimating it'd take as far as time wise. And then if he wants a flat rate, maybe if it's going to take 15 hours, whatever it takes, maybe tack on another four or five, I don't know, and give them that rate. What do you feel about that?
If we kind of knew, you know, the base rate of about what it would cost a block, you know, about what it takes to run it. Because I mean, we take that truck up there, it doesn't take long to clean three or four or 500 feet. But if we run into one that's full of sand, now that's a whole nother show. So I know he's been contracting at different times with some guys out of Hutch. So maybe the best thing for me to do would be get a footage. If I get some kind of footage and we'll sit down and I'll kind of figure it out and I'll throw it back at you maybe next meeting and then see where we're at. And I can talk to him in the meantime and see if it's fair, you know, for everybody. I'll kind of look at what we've been charging him and try and go from there. Yeah, we're more than happy to help them when we have time, you know. When they have, when they have an emergency, we try and get somebody at least to go. Because I know what it's like, you know. If it backs up in your house, it's something that's just not good for anybody. So, you know, we try and help them out. But then this one had been, the one that we did this last time had been pretty slow for quite a while. And it didn't help quite a bit. So let me get a footage and I'll kind of look back and go back with Jennifer and see what we've been doing on that. And then I'll try and bring something to you kind of in a formal idea of what we think it'll cost to do the whole thing next meeting.
How many pens it, you guys are?
Thoughts? You think, you thinking if everything went good, Jeff, just a few days being up there? What do you think?
You know, I don't know how many, I don't know how many mains there are up there, to tell you the truth, Ryan. You know, I've done the one at the church. We've done the one behind the restaurant. We've done the one up by the mill a time or two. But I don't know whether there's two or three more over. You know, they all end up south of the, south of the mill down there. That's where the ponds are. So let me just get a hold of him and see about, because he should have a map. He should know about how many feet he's got. And, and kind of get some insight that way and then see kind of where we've been. And I mean, try and treat him fair, but at the same time, make a little money while we're doing it and still be able to help him out. So, other than that, the only thing I got is on old business. That's all I've got, so.
Did you find out anything more on the, our bucket truck?
Oh, I did. They came and got it this morning. I have not heard a word since then. Well, I did too, I guess. He called me back this afternoon and he said, do you know that this truck needs a motor change? I said, well, I'm going by what diesel mechanic in Pratt told us. And he said, well, he said, let us investigate it a little bit because he said we may not have to. So haven't heard anything from him since. He knew that we had bypassed the DPF. And he said, Ford won't tell you this, but they run better if you bypass them than what they do coming out from the factory. So he said, we're not going to look down on it unless that was the cause of the problem. But he said, we should know very quick. So maybe I'll hear something next week or two. But anyway, I should have more information. Well, in fact, it'll be done, you know, one day or the other, my next meeting. But if we don't have to put them up. I said, you know, the only thing is, I don't want to get into is that you fix it and you tell me it's right. In three weeks, we got it back up there again. So I said, you know, we rely on that truck every day. We want to know that if it's fixed, it's done to where it's going to last. So anyway, that's where we left it. And I assume he'll call me tomorrow sometime. He wasn't in there. I took, he wanted to know, you know, where the programmer was to program that chip that bypassed that stuff. And so I took it up to him this afternoon. He wasn't there when I was there, so I just dropped it off and came right back. So anyway, maybe I'll hear something tomorrow, but.
The other question is on the Fifth Street. Did you get a Christmas seal on concrete and that?
That's our old business.
He never did get back with me on the cost. He say, I really don't, and I know he's covered up. But, and I didn't even see him out there today when we were out there. So I will try and get that done. Because I know you want to know something. And he just, you know, I know he talked to, was it Marshall or Ryan or one of you guys he talked to you. But I haven't heard anything back from him. No, I haven't, so.
Anything else for Jeff at this time?
I have something. We need to approve the invoice.
Oh, yeah. I had an invoice that went over the $2,000. We took that old sewer machine up to Aaron's repair about six weeks ago. It started acting up. We rebuilt everything on it that we thought we could fix. And Aaron's had worked on it before in the past. And so we took it up there. And by the time they got done, they went through it, but it was quite a bit more. It was about $3,000, which I didn't intend on doing. But he told me, he just flat told me when we got done, he said, the machine's wore out. I mean, we've done, it make a great sprayer, but I mean, it's 30 years old. And we've replaced all the valves. We've done the valves in the, in the triplex pump. We've done everything. And it's just, just wore out. So.
Do you think it's good to go now then?
Pardon?
It's repaired?
No, we're using the big truck. It's repaired. About 1,000 pounds all we can get out of it. They went through and replaced all the valves and they did everything they could, but we can't get the pressure back up to 1,800, 1,900 pounds like it was. It's just wore out. Machine's just wore out. So I don't know what else to do. I was hoping that we could get it fixed and save it for a few more years. But we don't have the money to replace it, so we're going to rely on that truck. That's all we can do. It needs new hose. New hose, about $4,000. If we can't get the pump up where it'll run without replacing the triplex pump. And the only way to do that's probably to send it into Key in Kansas City.
Oh, so you're saying you want to take the big truck up there and suck out the suckout?
No, we used, we, it's got a jet on it too.
It's got a jet on it too.
Yeah, it's got 500 foot of hose on it.
Oh.
And holds 1,500 gallons compared to 300. That's what we took the last time. Yeah, we can jet it out, we can jet it out faster with that truck than we could with that little machine. That's where we found out the machine failed. We took it up there and it wouldn't, it wouldn't pick up the nozzle. It wouldn't run. And so we took it up there to see it, to have a look at it. And we'd already been, Mel and I had been through the pump over in the shop. We bought all the parts, all new, all new plungers and all that stuff in there. And so we took it on up to Aaron's because we didn't know what else to do. You know, there's a couple of bypass valves in there that you can go from spray on the top to the nozzle and that stuff. And they rebuilt them. And he said, there still is no more pressure out of that pump than that. So pump's just wore out. The big pump is, so.
Did you, have you looked into what that'll cost to fix like later on? I mean, is that a big?
I called Key. The guy has not come by yet. We have a salesman that comes around about once a month. He hasn't come by yet. But it's going to be.
What do you think?
Pretty lucrative.
What do you guys think like if we end up selling it while we're ahead on it before it completely gives out?
It makes a great ditch sprayer, weed sprayer, you know, but that's about it.
I mean, do you think it'll give out soon? I mean, do you?
It's not going, it's not going to give out. It's going to stay at about 800 or 900 pounds is what it's going to stay. And it needs a hose reel anyway. And a hose reel's about $4,000 for the hose to go on. So I just, you know, no more money than, we've spent enough money on it now. I think that, you know, unless you want to get into replacing the pump on a 30-year-old machine, why, we'd probably just better let the sleeping dog lie, I guess. Try to figure out something else later on. I didn't figure you wanted to invest a lot of money in trying to repair it any farther than that. I think we've gone, we've put about $4,000 in it. I think that's far enough. Really did. So I'll know more when he comes through about that pump. But that pump's going to be $6,000 or $7,000, I'm pretty sure. So we bought that machine in the late 80s, early 90s. It's, it's pretty well made before, so.
Did you say my grandpa bought that?
Yeah, yeah. Bill's grandpa bought that one. He was here and that would have been in the late 80s. So it's had 30 years worth of pretty good, pretty good use, so.
Any idea what it anyone cost, Jeff?
Eighty thousand and up. They started at about 80.
Guess you'll be using that truck, won't you?
We're just going to pray that.
That whole truck was cheaper than that, wasn't it?
Yeah, we're just going to pray that that old truck will just keep on showing you because it does a great job.
We give 25 for that truck.
22.5, I think is what we gave for it, yeah. It's got a piston pump on it. I mean, it'll pump a lot a lot. And I mean, it's shooting it through a nozzle this big round instead of ones like this. So it's made for cleaning 24, 36-inch pipes. So we can polish an 8-inch one pretty good. We can make her pretty shiny pretty quick, so. But, yeah, I looked at one, I looked at one last spring. In fact, now that you said that, but the pull type went about 80,000 to 90,000 and then they go up from there, so. But I think 30 years is pretty well served its purpose. So.
So you pretty much don't think you'll use that pull type for like anything?
We can use it to spray weeds in a big ditch and stuff with it. But right now, you know, we get Ryan to do it for, so I guess we'll just put it away for now and see where the money goes and then go from there. I think probably would be the best thing to do. Unless you want to put it up for auction, but.
Well, that's what I was wondering. If there's any way we can find the value of it and get rid of it.
I know trade-in value on it's higher than probably what it would bring.
Really?
You know, only because of the margin salesmen have to make stuff. I mean, it's like buying a car or anything else. But, but I just didn't figure we were in the market to try and afford to buy one. So I thought we'd just kind of roll it back out of the way so it don't freeze and drain it and just wait, you know. Know what else to do. So.
Well, put it at auction, do we have?
I, I think we're kind of low on what we, we don't have very many options of what we can do with it, so.
I guess whatever.
Just make a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the 31, 69, 71 Darren's repair sewer machine.
A second. Motion and a second. Sanders or Ryan? Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Carries four O.
I'll still find out what the pump and stuff costs when, when he comes by and let you know next meeting. And you know, if it's lucrative, we could, we could look into putting a pump on it. But if it's not, like, I, I wouldn't recommend putting any more money in on it, I don't think. Got a lot of hours off it, so. Anyway, that's all I have.
Okay, moving on, city attorney John Beverley.
This probably isn't mood at this point, but there was a request that city staff and myself look into funding options for the sidewalk grant. And did you get my email?
Yes, I did.
Okay. And I kind of came to a stopping point. I don't know whether you want me to go any further, but.
Right.
That was one thing. And then did we decide on the ordinance for the dollar increase on the dumpster?
No, we were, we just discussed it and to bring it up at a later time.
Okay.
That's all.
That was the only thing on my list?
Just to get some input.
All right. Anything for John at this time? Okay. Mayor report, no report. Moving on to old business. Roads survey.
I got ahold of Randy Anderson from Central Kansas Survey. And he's done, he did all our other surveying on the annex and the stuff down to church and Dollar General and that stuff. And he said to do the half a mile of Fifth Street from Prairie to the highway and from First Street south to railroad tracks on West Street would be about $2,500. Each stake at every couple hundred feet and then survey it out that way, so. He said it might be a while before he could get to it. He was pretty well covered up. But I told him I didn't think we were in that big hurry. This one, we can get on the list a bit, so.
I think we've probably got to start there.
We need to know where, what we've got to work with.
Yep.
So what's the plan after that?
Well, you got to find out your boundaries and you got to make sure that.
Yeah, but I understand that. But let's make a plan what's after that.
That's all, that's all he'll have.
Yeah, well, I mean.
He's just going to give you the markers and from there you do with them what you want.
I mean, I pretty well tell you, concrete's out of the picture for, for what I think. Because I mean.
I think we need to, we need to get a price, you know, see what it's going to cost. I've had a lot of people tell me that you guys need to look into concrete, you know. They're putting the brain and gush to where out there. If we don't look into it.
I'm not opposed to looking into it. And I talked to, I mean, I talked to Chris about it one evening. And, and I just kind of tried to hint around to see if he'd even throw a ballpark out there. And he said, I'm not doing that. He said, you know, you guys find out exactly what, how much you got to work with and, and you guys get that part down. And he said, I'll, I can get you something off of that.
We discussed the drainage on the south side that day. I was out there with him too. Of course, he, he kind of did the same thing with me. He said, we kind of need to kind of pinpoint what you think you want to do. And I said, well, let us get a shot on this and see what we got for drainage. And then we'll kind of know from there, you know, where we want to go to. So, because I think, I think that if you're going to concrete it, we sure need to close that in. I mean, at least wherever we do the concrete street, we need to get that drainage closed in.
Yeah.
I think raising the manholes and that stuff is going to be fairly shallow. It won't be a big deal to get the manholes up if you do decide you want to pour it. So we won't have to engineer that. But, and I think we can do like they did at the grocery store with some drainage. Get a cage basin in there where we can kick that water on down in the ditch, maybe at one spot, you know, whether it's clear back to the west end or, or where it hits. But, you know, and not spend a wad of money on that either. So I'll, I'll shake his tree a little bit and see if, you know, if I can get him to, we'll get, get you some numbers that we can deal with and go from there. So if I've got a height idea on the manhole lids, you know, we can order, we can order raises for those lids that will fit right down in there. So if we know what the height is. So when we know what the curb height is already on the north side. So, you know, depending on how, where, how we pitch that road, we probably sure want to pitch it all to the south because otherwise we'd have to put mouths in the north side of that and try to drain anything behind there. And I don't think we can do it. So, but I'll talk with him and see, and see what he thinks about what we should do with that. Because he's done way more of that than I have. So, and we'll see if we can't get you something a little closer than just a ballpark out of the sky. Christ, maybe by next meeting. So we'll see what we can do.
I think we need to spend the 2,500 and go ahead and have the, both of them done, though.
Yeah.
I mean, because you don't have a starting point to tell you know what.
No.
What you got to work.
And we know pretty close, we think, where the south side is, but we don't know exactly because we've never found a pin. So anyway.
I mean, it could be that just because we think we know where it's at.
That's exactly right.
It could be another pocket further.
It really could.
And that could benefit us a lot.
Yes. You know, most generally when we set a pole line, we know pretty close where that right away is at. But we could have missed it too, so.
Do we need to have a motion on that 2,500?
It's over my spend, I live.
Make a motion to spend 2,500 to have Fifth Street and Southwest, Southwest Street surveyed at the cost of $2,500.
Motion and a second. Sanders and Christie, any other discussion?
That was from, over here is from Prairie all the way to the highway?
Yes. There's two different right, there's two different widths there. So.
All righty.
Yeah, just an extra block, I guess. Instead of doing the BFW like we talked, might as well consider that.
Yeah.
Okay, motion and a second on the table. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Carries four O.
I think your neighbors out there are going to be really shocked where the south side is.
Yeah.
It's pretty wide. Okay, I'll take care of it. That's all I got.
Okay, moving on to dumpster. Jamie.
I'm going to learn how to turn off comments.
Hailed it some thoughts, did you?
Um, I'm going to try to bring it up here. I put a.
Yeah, could you read it as it was written?
Yeah.
Your poll.
I put up a poll.
I agree with you.
I put up a poll just to try to get like yes or no's.
It worked. You got some.
Yeah, you got some feedback.
Yes or no's.
As did I.
Yes.
They can complain all they want, but it's still full every 90 to 10 days. Depending where you look at it.
That's true.
Get to it here.
Be glad you're not getting picked for a justice for this.
I had 123 votes on here.
It's a fair amount.
With 73 yes and 50 no on here. And no, I did not go through and make sure they were all citizens or of voting age that paid a bill.
But I would say there was a fair amount that were.
Yeah, there was a few that were probably questionable, but.
People who don't live here that followed along and voted just because.
Or children.
They might still be hauling stuff in though, you never know.
Right, yeah, there you go.
So.
So that's what I got for you.
I don't know. I think we just need to sit on it a while and keep talking. And I don't think we need to do anything right now. I just wanted to give us plenty of time to.
Right. It just gets the thought out there. Because it is full. It's being used, so.
What's it costing us a month?
$900 to $1,000 a month. And even if you charge everybody in town, it doesn't cover the cost of it. It just helps.
Just helps with it.
Helps to blow a little bit. I mean, the city's still going to spend three to four, $500 a month on it. So.
We've never had a time that it wasn't full. You can just about count it every 10 days.
And I guess, you know, if there's that much, that many people that are upset about it, I mean, when the time comes that we can't afford to keep it down there, we'll just go away with it. I mean, if they don't want to help pay for it and across the board.
Well, we can field the phone calls and my neighbor's yard's full of trash.
Exactly.
I mean, we got, it's keeping the community cleaned up.
It's costing us money now, like even after raising it a dollar, it's still going to cost us some.
It's still going to cost us some.
That's what I'm saying. I, I think you got to go higher than a dollar.
I don't, I don't. No, because it's there for a benefit for the citizens. But I didn't really think, you know, for the first six months.
Back when you started.
When we started it, I mean, we might have only dumped it once, sometimes twice a month. And after about the first year, it.
I think people are using them for big projects. So I've really been trying to remind people that it's not to be used for house, full houses being torn down. That, you know, if you have an actual project, please take it to the dump. It's not, I mean, it's not for.
Maybe we need to talk to the commissioners.
I tell you, they've been really good about not putting stuff in that, you know, we've got signs down there. So the things we don't accept. And we nailed a few. Of course, we have a camera on it. If we find something in there, we'll go back and find out who put it in. And after a few times of that, you know, people are really good about only putting the stuff in that the dumpster will allow. Once in a while we'll get somebody that says, hey, I got metal. And we just, we've got a pile over there in the pole yard. We just have to throw it over there. You know, usually we have a dumpster. We don't right now. But, but they've been really good about taking care of it too. They really have. So, and if we flag it out, if it's full, they've been really good about going, you know, most people would pile it beside there. But I've seen people drive by, you know, when we've got it staked off and we're waiting on, because they won't pick it up if it's over full. So, and we, I've got a guy goes down there at least twice a week and mashes it down every week. So, I mean, it's, it's done good. Wherever it's coming from, it's done good, so.
I'll just keep it on there for a while and keep talking to people. Keep talking to people.
Very good, no other old business, move on to new business, the CMB license for the grocery store.
I need you guys to accept the beer license for the grocery store.
I make a motion to accept the beer license for the grocery store.
Second. A motion and a second, Sanders and Bryant, any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed, carries four oh. No executive sessions with no other business, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second. Bryant, the CS. All in favor? All opposed, carries four oh, meeting adjourned at seven thirty.
Wow. We got it up on service.